And look forward to discovering a little bit more about the issues that are important to the Lakewood community to the extent we can fill in some gaps. So in developing our legislative agenda for this short session, we know that time is tight. For those of you who are representing us down there, we wanted to focus just on the pressing issues facing our community. We are intentionally not advancing any funding requests this cycle. We're hopeful that that'll allow more capacity for our legislative representatives to tackle these other challenging topics that we've identified. And those two priorities that are in our policy manual this season for this session are public safety and geographic equity and discharge for state facilities. And so just a little bit of background on the first priority, and I believe the city has provided a copy of a letter that we drafted and circulated with 14, 15 other cities and towns in the county on this particular issue. But I think it's important to reflect what brought us here and to give thanks for where we are and to provide some constructive feedback for where we hope to be. So in 2021, the state legislature passed nine police reform bills prohibiting the use of chokeholds or neck restraints, prohibiting the use of a no-knock warrant, modifying the standard for when an officer may engage in a police vehicle pursuit, limiting the kinds of surplus weapons a department may receive from the military, limiting when officers may use tear gas, requiring the highest ranking elected official in the jurisdiction to authorize the use of tear gas against members of the public, establishing a duty for law enforcement officers to immediately intervene if a fellow officer is using excessive force and to render aid to the person, requiring officers to report any criminal conduct by another officer, establishing a statewide standard for use of force, and the ninth one, limiting when and how law enforcement officers can use force against members of the public, and establishing additional training requirements. The City of Lakewood had implemented many of these police reforms in advance of the state legislature taking action in 2021, but we have to say that we appreciate the changes that were made. In fact, you know, seven or eight of the nine of them are, again, already implemented by our particular police force here in the City of Lakewood. The exception that has bubbled to the surface was the pursuit of motor vehicles. Although we had in place restrictive pursuit policies that weigh the community's safety interests with those bearing the underlying reason for the pursuit, similar to many other cities and towns in Washington State, this has become an issue. It's important for us to recognize that while we were ahead of the legislature in advance of those reforms that I've articulated, we have implemented and ultimately approved those police reforms as well. So we're on board with many of those reforms. The fact is that cities and towns remain committed to these reforms, as evidenced by our proactive approach in implementing them before being mandated to do so. But we are experiencing problems and challenges with vehicular pursuit, and that is a reform that we seek to have introduced in the legislative session at this particular time because we have seen, and the data has reflected, that vehicular theft in particular has resulted in a range of other crimes and significant increases in crimes in our community. So this is why Lakewood, along with 15 other cities and towns in our state and cities and towns in other parts of the state, are asking our legislative representatives to make refinements to that pursuit policy to allow for the pursuit of stolen vehicles, given the number of criminals who use those vehicles to facilitate other crimes. And we also seek to allow local jurisdictions to individually continue with their current policies against all pursuits if they consider that to be in their best interest. So it really is a matter of local control. Second, on the issue of juvenile crime, in addition to the nine bills mentioned above, the 2021 legislature also passed a bill requiring juveniles to have an attorney present before being questioned by law enforcement. Certainly, while the intent of the law may have been honorable, the unintended consequence has been a spike in juvenile crime and a hindering, if you will, of law enforcement's ability to divert juveniles from the criminal justice system. And so some statistics, I think we've shared these with you previously, but for those of you who are zooming in tonight, from '21 to '22, we saw a 66% increase in juvenile crimes, specifically 25% increase in assaults, 167% increase in robberies, a 475% increase in motor vehicle thefts. Welcome, Rep. Levitt, good to see you. The increase of juvenile crime extends into 2023, and despite the increase in crime, arrest numbers are down. And we'll give you three sort of concrete examples of juvenile crime that we've experienced in just the last two months. On October 9th, for instance, a vehicle was pulled over for a traffic stop with multiple juvenile young adults inside, ages 16 to 19. During the stop, four handguns were spotted in the vehicle, and after a search warrant, it was learned that the handguns had been stolen and would have been modified to make it fully automatic. On November 15, nine suspects in three vehicles robbed a gas station. Suspects were juveniles, young adults, who had been connected to multiple robberies around King County, as well as an attempted burglary at a gun store in Pierceville County. And recently, unfortunately, on December 2nd, a stolen Kia with five juveniles tried to flee from police, and it wasn't a high-speed pursuit, but they tried to flee from police when spotted. Those five juveniles bailed from the vehicle near middle school and into an adjacent swamp area here in Lakewood. Two suspects got away, three juveniles entered the swamp, two were taken into custody, and unfortunately, one juvenile died via drowning after refusing to come out despite police calls for him to come out for his own safety. So these are just three examples of the dozens of serious and sometimes deadly incidents that are occurring with juveniles in our community, and it's sad and troubling. So we support amending the law to allow a parent or guardian to provide consent for a juvenile to be interviewed by law enforcement, to include consent to search property, given the significant increase in juvenile crime. And while the change may not seem significant, we understand from the experts in our field, predominantly our police officers, and we have our Assistant Chief here tonight to answer any questions, they believe it's a significant tool that will enable them to address juvenile crime and to actually speak with the juveniles before it's necessary for them to actually enter into the juvenile justice system. So we're hopeful that this will be slight but important modifications to the police reforms that were well done back in 2021, and again, many of which have already been implemented by the City of Lakewood. So what we wanted to do tonight is raise the first issue, public safety, and then give us all a chance for some discussion, and then we'll transition to the second issue, which is the geographic equity and the discharge for state facilities, which I understand, Representative Bransky, you're well familiar with because you helped us get the study done. So that's very, very helpful. So I'll open the table for conversation, Representative, or excuse me, Councilmember Anderson.
Representative Bransky, thank you for coming tonight. Unfortunately, not our district alone, but in many districts, representatives have been hesitant to engage people who are critical of the legislature's actions on these issues. And so I commend you for listening to your constituents tonight and being willing to come here and engage with us. I've been very fortunate in my life to have traveled all over the world. And one thing I've noticed, the common denominator among people of every race, creed, color, economic group, geographic area, religion, is they want safety for their family. I have not found a place in the world where people don't want their family to be safe. And the residents of Lakewood are left safe because of the legislative actions that were taken, however well-intentioned, with respect to the pursuit issue and questioning juveniles. Stolen cars are through the roof. Yes, they're up in the country in general by 33%, but if you look at the numbers here in what Lakewood and here in Washington, we're in the hundreds of percents. It's much different. They're used in robberies. Day doesn't go by that someone in your family doesn't see someone with a blacked-out license plate passing on the right, racing down the street, going the wrong way, crashing into a storefront. It's emboldened, enabled, and encouraged criminal behavior, particularly among impressionable juveniles. The issue with respect to questioning of juveniles, who should be treated differently, is, I think, pretty simple if you look at attorney versus parent. We'd like parents to be able to give consent. Early in my career, I did criminal law because Amy made me do it, but I learned quite a bit about it. But one of the easiest things to learn is that a defense attorney's duty is to try to get their client off. Guilty or not, you do your best to get your client off. That means they essentially almost never will talk. That's an attorney's duty. A parent's duty, a responsible parent's duty, is to correct the behavior of their children. They have a different motivation and one that is aligned with the interests of society, which is to correct the behavior. And when there's an irresponsible parent, the social work that police officers do every day kicks in, and they have a chance to help redirect, find resources, and get some kids the right way before they go too far the long way. Well, there's many things the legislature can do, but one of them is not repeal human nature. And human nature is, if you give the tools to people who want to do bad things, you let them run away with impunity, you don't punish them, you help protect them, that's going to encourage, embolden that behavior, and it's going to get worse, and it has. You can repeal well-intentioned but mistaken legislation. As the mirror indicated, the City of Lakewood already implemented virtually all of the, quote, judicial reforms that came through in an emotionally charged package in the legislature. We've now had this social experiment. Those are good reforms. They have no qualms with the ones that we did. These two were a social experiment that failed. In the 1100s, there was a French abbot named Clairvol, the one who's attributed, to whom the saying, "The road to hell is paved with good intentions." And one of the meanings of that, as philosophers have brought out, is that good intentions, when acted upon, may have unintended consequences. And it's not that judicial reforms weren't a good idea, it's that the unintended consequences, especially with respect to juveniles and stolen cars, are a burden on society and make us much less safe. And the secondary consequences of this, in my neighborhood, a gated community, it had a self-employed lawn service provider with a very nice truck and trailer and two employees. All he could do is wave as his truck drove away because somebody, you know, got through the gate, tailgating someplace, and dropped their buddy off, and they took the truck and drove out, and nobody could even chase them. Police were there relatively quickly and go, "Well, hope you find it." But we can't go out and chase them down. They just sped off. Now, three people are unemployed. They asked to recapitalize that small business. So there are all these, people don't get to work. And most people who have their cars stolen end up being people who have them parked outside of apartments, people who can least afford it, the people who must get to work with those cars. So it's cascading. It's totally out of control. And so I hope that you can see fit to fix it. It's surgical. It's not go out and repeal everything you've done. It's a surgical effort to make people in Lakewood in the state of Washington safer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Any other thoughts or comments from council, and I'll certainly open up to our representatives. Again, we thank you for being here. Wednesday evenings are not the easiest of evening to schedule meetings, so we appreciate your time tonight. Mr. Branstad?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Representative Levitt, Representative Bransky. I guess I'd just like to add my thoughts on the juvenile, the rules regarding law enforcement interaction with juveniles who are suspects or who may have some relationship with some lawful activity that's going on, that could well have information that would help diffuse things or being able to go and do that. I think when I look, and I talk with people in businesses, that the message that juveniles got, there were two that are very disturbing. And one is, the police, the community, can't really do anything to me. And they, in fact, are very likely to simply tell that to a store owner, or to tell someone, or even to tell that to a police officer, you know, "I'm 15, and I'm 14, and you can't do anything to me," and it goes on and off. And that's emboldening to be able to go and do that. But I'm even more concerned about the fact that we're upsetting the dynamics of family inside the community. We're sending a message where we're essentially telling young people, "Don't listen to your parents, listen to your lawyer," and it was disturbing that the feedback that we were able to get from the agency that provides telephonic lawyer consultations, so over there, can't really say how often, they just go to the default advice of, "Don't say anything." Okay? Or don't do anything. And you set up conflicts between what they're hearing from the lawyer that we're saying you should listen to, and their parents, who have a different, as Councilmember Anderson says, have a different interest. They have not a single incident of point of view of interest in their child, but they have a long-term interest in their child. And that, you know, we need to be promoting and empowering parents to be a part of getting young people off of the wrong path and onto the right path. You know, for many years, and nothing was ever totally successful on trying to keep young people off of drugs, but many, many were off of that, where there were a variety of programs, going back to the days of DARE and the successive things to do that, that really involved many parents and other adults of getting folks over. And police officer interaction with young people. I can go back to a time when I was in the Army, and I was stationed in the South Side of Chicago, okay? And some of the most effective programs at combating gang activity and that were extracurricular police youth activities, like basketball and other things, that now you've created a situation of, you know, walls between communication, between folks that could actually do that. So I think that that's an area that I'd really like to see going on because Lakewood is a community, like most communities, where people are wherever they're at, but they certainly hope that wherever their children end up is a better place than now, and looking to move forward. And this particular policy is taking a very valuable player in helping parents in terms of with their youth by taking the police out of any equation that a parent has to do, and in fact, be able to go and do that. So I would hope that you can go to do that. And the other thing on both of these two policies that I would caution is, the fixes shouldn't be compromises. If you work to make compromises, to try to do half-measures in trying to fix either the issues around pursuit or the issues around how well are we dealing with young people, that you're just creating a realm of where unintended consequences are there. It's not a question of satisfying so that both sides think the solution is kind of okay. We need a solution that is okay. And if that requires a majority to get on one side to be able to do that, that we would hope to do that, but, you know, don't negotiate to the point of diluting whatever fixes are possible. Thank you.
Councilmember Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, thank you for coming. I would just like to know and hear from the both of you, what is your reasoning of why these are policies and laws that you have supported and the possibility of us, what we would like to see in Lakewood happen for our constituents, which are yours also? So I would love to hear from the both of you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, members of the council. So yes, I acknowledge that public safety is a paramount issue that the community is concerned about. We certainly hear it from our constituents when they reach out and talk to us. At, you know, at best, it's a huge quality of life issue, and at worst, people lose their lives, whether it's due to interacting with people in the community that maybe not have the best intentions, maybe to be a little bit nefarious, to the point where, yeah, it's having a huge negative impact on our quality of life in the city, as everyone here acknowledged. So we talked about a whole range of things. We talked about vehicle pursuits. We talked about vehicle thefts. We talked about interactions with juveniles. We talked with a whole slew of issues. When I first started serving in the legislature in 2021, it was a time where we heard it loud and clear from the community that there needs to be a balanced approach that tries to continue good quality of life in regards to public safety, but also balance the needs of the community to make interactions between the community members safer, interactions between the community members and law enforcement safer, for not only members of law enforcement, but members of the community, and come up with a group of policies that tried our best, looking at the data that we had at the time, to figure out a way to thread that needle to continue to include law enforcement in the day-to-day activities of keeping the community safe. And I acknowledge law enforcement does and will always continue to play a key role in managing every community's public safety. So, you know, between 2021 and the past couple of legislative sessions, council, thanks for acknowledging the fact that we, the legislature, continue to make adjustments to policy to continue to perfect that balance of public safety between interactions between, you know, members of the community, law enforcement, and also making sure that people who do cross the line are held accountable. And we give those people, who we did hold into account, the tools that they need to succeed within the best of our ability to re-enter the community, like 90% of people who do get incarcerated or interact with the criminal justice system do. We need to make sure that they don't continue to be incentivized or whatever, make the decision to continue to be harmful to our quality of life and public safety. That being said, myself, I am always open to suggestions to continue to thread that needle, to make our community more safe, keeping in mind that, you know, back in 2021, the community did have some serious concerns about how do we address that safety threshold that we had mentioned, I had mentioned a little bit before, when it comes to, you know, interactions between law enforcement and the community. There's a reason the legislature convenes every single year. It's because we continue to adjust and perfect and come up with new policies that try to address the issues like the ones that you all very pointedly brought up tonight. So for me, yes, I am absolutely open to anything that will continue to find that balance. I will say that, you know, the data is very helpful. I'm looking at the charts and graphs that the city was able to provide because you are the folks that keep the data when it comes to our community, and that is very helpful. Because, you know, when I look at a suggestion or a proposal to adjust a policy, I look at it very critically to try to make sure that I'm making the best decisions, you know, not only for what I would like to see, but what members of the community would like to see of their elected representative at the state level. So with that, you know, as far as specific adjustments, again, I'm all ears. I'm open to pretty much anything. I think, you know, the data is helpful. The data is helpful when I go and continue to have these kinds of conversations with my colleagues in the legislature. You know, there are 98 representatives in the House and 49 senators in the Senate, and we need to work collaboratively to pass a policy that works the best, but there does need to be enough agreement within the legislature to send it to the governor's desk and have the governor sign that into law and make those adjustments and make those changes. So when I made my votes on whatever policy I did or did not vote on back in 2021, it was very calculated, and I thought very critically about it at the time. We met with every police chief, Representative Levitt and myself, met with every police chief in the 28th District, and we continue to have those open dialogues, correct, multiple, multiple times. We continue to have those dialogues and get those perspectives, not only from them, but also members of the community, who have maybe the same viewpoint or a different viewpoint to make sure that, again, we're trying to thread that needle and be as precise as possible to balance that public safety need with other needs that the community would like to see of us as well. So that's, I could, you know, keep going on and on because it's a big issue that certainly affects not only this community, but communities across the state and across the nation, quite frankly, and it's a dialogue that we'll continue to have. So thank you.
Thanks, Rep. Bransky. And, you know, I listened to earlier, John Coffield tells me I need to get a life, and that may be. But having said that, I have listened to many of your council meetings and really appreciates Councilmember Loretella and Councilmember Moss, and have heard from a youth in Lakewood yesterday. Rep. Bransky and I have been doing community conversations across our districts in all areas and in all places across. And there's a particular youth who has come twice, who is from Lakewood, who talks about the need for youth activities and youth engagement and opportunities. And I know that Councilmember Loretella, Loretella, and Councilmember Moss mentioned that in an earlier council meeting, and I thought, oh, my goodness, I need to connect with them. And so we saw each other not too long ago at the Covey grand opening for a room that the Boeing Center has done. And we know that youth activities and engagement are a critical response to providing opportunities for youth. This particular youth, who is very articulate, talked about the fact that in Lakewood, he doesn't have the opportunities to engage. He mentioned that the YMCA is wonderful, and they've done some good work, but it's expensive. It's about $40, you know, and if you're right, in kind of that middle-income area that you don't qualify for reduced opportunities, that it's really hard to engage in that activity in the night. The City of Tacoma and the school district and others really did a great job, and also philanthropic dollars of engaging youth this past summer. And it was a five to 10 each night, Monday through Friday in the summer, and there were several of us elected officials who walked the neighborhoods, and they were targeted neighborhoods, and we literally handed out flyers door to door to door. It wasn't based on where we think youth would be. We handed door to door to door. And when we did that, I had several conversations. I went with two of my children because we didn't have childcare that particular day, so they accompanied, and I reminded them they were getting good steps and would get a reward at the end. But what I learned from that and listening to neighbors who would say, "Well, I don't have kids, you know, I don't need to do this," I'm like, "But you know who, you know, you might know someone who has kids in Tacoma, and this is free, and it's free not just from, not just for kids who go to Tacoma Public Schools, but it's free for any child in Tacoma." And so I'm very excited to look at the data to find out. And so I'm very excited to look at the data to find out how many kids participated, or how many youth rather, participated in that program. It was free meals. It was free activities. It had recreation and had arts and crafts. It had video game options, so it had, you know, for the variety of interests our youth have, and that's important. The other thing is you talked about both when we had our meeting together in Burrs and then yesterday in the Spanaway Parkland area. I mean, he came all the way out to remind us that he was there, and his mother lives in Lakewood, and as does he, and he's a UPS student. And he reminded us that Pierce Transit doesn't provide opportunities, so they have to walk a long way in order to get to centers and opportunities. And so I think, and I really appreciate Councilmember Bransiter talking about the importance of youth activities. I mean, we know that DARE did not work, and, you know, that's not an effective program, and I think there are other programs out there that are providing some data and evidence-based opportunities, and we need to look into those. There's a wonderful program out in Shelton that's looking like it's having some good results, and I'm excited to learn more about that program. But the more that we can engage in youth activities, the more we can invest in youth activities in, in a variety of interests of our youth, some youth are not going to want to go hang out at a school. You know, that's not their thing. And so providing opportunities, but also providing transit to get there and available and accessible, affordable transit to get there, because what this youth, this freshman at UPS, formerly of Lakewood, also lives in Lakewood, said to us is, we have to walk a long ways to get to the transit, to get to the activity, and so that's a problem. And so I think listening to our youth and providing those opportunities is really important, and the more we can invest in Boys and Girls Club, which we know we have a strength in Lakewood and others, I think that's where we want to invest our dollars and certainly support that because we know that youth developmentally, their brains don't function. I mean, you know, if there was a law that you can't make important decisions until you're 25, that might be good. I wouldn't propose it, you know, because there would be lots of youth like, excuse me, I can make decisions. But developmentally, we know that it's a challenge for our youth to be able to understand at 16, I have an 18-year-old, I also have an 11-year-old, I also have a 12-year-old, but my 18-year-old even thinks that, you know, she can make, she knows everything and can make long-term decisions on a lot of different stuff, and I counsel her on occasion when she's choosing to listen, that probably not a good idea, probably you might want to consider this, probably might want to take advantage of this opportunity, but it's part of that, that brain development and that science that we know that children and education development is impacted. So the more we can invest in youth, I think the City of Tacoma provided an opportunity for us to learn from. I would support efforts in Lakewood and was very excited to hear that the council was talking about that, and Councilmember Loretella and Moss, of how do we engage our youth and our youth council to be able to do those things? So appreciate the opportunity, but the more that we can do that, I think will increase the opportunities for public safety because what that youth said to us very clearly that you provide us opportunities for access to healthy engaged matters, or we're left to our own devices, and you choose. And so for me, I want to invest in, in opportunities in our communities across the 28th to be able to do that.
Thank you. I think those are excellent comments I met with Superintendent Banner today on this exact topic. And, you know, I might throw it out there to further the conversation, what can we do to help in your pursuit of additional funding mechanisms? Because I know we contributed some ARPA monies to the Y. We've done a lot of money investment in youth activities, but I'm sure we can do more. So it would be great to have a wider conversation about how we can help get more funding. And one of the additional public safety policy requests that was in our outline to you was certainly stable funding for co-responder programs and therapeutic courts so that we're not just putting people in, incarcerating them for incarceration's sake. We know that that doesn't work per se, and Deputy Mayor Moss and I were in our own municipal court today, watching Veterans Court, which is one of our therapeutic courts, and watching two graduates and others successfully step up, if you will. And it was really heartwarming to see that, and that's the kind of program that we're investing in. The Judge Mansfield already told us a little bit more about a community court that she will be installing in the therapeutic process in municipal court with $187,000 grant from the state. It's a reimbursable grant, but it's a matter of making sure we have stable funding so that good things continue. So we'd be open to helping with that conversation for both youth activities and advancements and certainly therapeutic courts.
And Mr. Mayor, I think there were dollars, you know, there were many millions in the Blake bill that was passed last year that, that added dollars to therapeutic courts and other options. And in addition, I serve on the Juvenile Justice Partnership Council, and we talk often of how do we divert youth from incarceration because once they touch that point, it's, it's, it's a, it's a road travel that is tough, and you want to avoid where you can, but then also hold folks accountable where you must. And it's a balance to be able to do those things. And so there are some folks who are on there who are really working hard, including a prosecutor up in King County and some others, of how do you present dollars that do the balance of both? And so I think I'm investing in therapeutic courts. There were dollars in there for that.
Right.
In Blake and getting those out to communities, and we're, you know, we're kind of pressuring our state agencies to get those dollars out quickly to be able to produce the good results that we know can happen if, if those dollars get out to the institutions who are willing to do the work.
Right. Well, Councilmember Anderson.
Therapeutic courts, you have to get them there. And I see, I see Pierce County's numbers, and I see numbers from other places, and the problem is the way the system is set up now, there's no coercive influence to get the people there. Take the drug charges off the books, you know, one of the tools that prosecutors use was drugs were the secondary offense. They stop them for something, they charge them with the secondary offense, they plead them down to the secondary offense and use that as a lever to get them in. So there's two, two ways that people get into the system. One is through the civil commitment. Washington doesn't have anything that is remotely effective at getting a troubled family member into the system on the civil side. That leaves the voluntary folks rare and the criminal side. So the pipeline, there are adequate resources now for therapeutic courts. Legislature did a good job there, but there's, you can't get the horse to the water. That's the current problem, and it's going to be that way through the next biennium. And you're going to see funds, if they're used, they're going to have very, very low participation numbers. And it's unfortunate because we've had success with the, Veterans Court's a great example. You can turn, turn people's lives around, and that's what you want to do. So I think the answer is all of the above. You got to get them there, and sometimes you got to chase them down the street and catch them first. And then you get them into the rec program, you know. I personally think, and I came from a mill town where you had to fight your way out of things, and if it hadn't been for the rec programs and sports, I don't know which way I would have turned. I wasn't a bad kid. I was, I didn't get in trouble, but I had that outlet, and it kept me from being with the guys who were always fighting. It was just worrying about them coming after you. So I hear what you're saying. I love the youth programs. I love therapeutic courts, but you have to have some way to get the horse to water. Just having the watering hole there isn't going to do it.
Anything else in the group here? Deputy Mayor Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you both for coming tonight. We appreciate all your support. Transportation has been an issue for our youth from day one, and it's not getting any better. So the programs that we put in place is good, but how do we get them there? That's our biggest issue. So I just wanted to say to you both, thank you for all you do to try to make our things, the things that we ask of you to come to fruition. I know you do the best you can, but it's just, it breaks our heart to see our youth destroying their life the way they are right now. It's out of control. So even if we put an event on here in the city, there's fear. So we have to make sure that safety is in place in order for us to help our students to feel comfortable and to do the things that we want them to do. So I appreciate all you do, but we have a lot of work to do. Thank you.
I guess before we, Councilmember Bransiter, go ahead.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I guess that I would just like to make a couple of comments that are apart from our two priorities, because the two priorities tend to dwell on things that are, need to be fixed. And I think that there are also some things, and I appreciate in the two of you specifically and in, and, and in the legislature, in Lakewood, there's a great deal of empathy and concern and want to do things well for service members and the families of service members. And I do think that we have, we are on a trajectory of making this a better place for service-connected families to live. Each year, we create some things to do that, and you do some things at the state level, and we look at doing some things in the city to do that. And I think we're on the right trajectory in, in that case, and, you know, and I encourage you to encourage your colleagues that that's a, that's a journey. It's not something that gets done, but that it's something that's important to keep an emphasis on in terms of doing that for, first of all, the benefit of the people, the service members and the members in those families, but also for the benefit of the greater community because of the economic vitality that, that those families, and particularly those families, because of their good experience here, ended up making this a more permanent location for them. And I would, I would want to thank you for the work that you've done in the past and let you know that it's, it's evident and it's appreciated and, and, and that is an important demographic to us as a city, and I think to the region and to the state. And I think that you and your colleagues have been doing well by them over the past dozen years.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that. Yes, Rep. Bransky?
Thank you, Councilmember Bransiter, for that. You know, last year was the, the year of, you know, we talk about it was the year of housing, and I do believe that's true. But it also, I often connected, if you want to come to the Lakewood Rotary in January, you can hear all about it, because there, it was also the year of military veterans affairs and legislation. We had several pieces of legislation, the most ever, and it's not just me saying that. It's the Veterans Legislative Council and Jerfugic and those folks who said that as well, and we focused both on whether it was assisting our schools in Purple Heart and Purple Star Awards, whether it's serving our military spouses, whether it's serving our veterans to be able to integrate if they're transition. I could name several different bills. There were about 23 of them, and have a great slide deck, happy to share, on those particular things. But we have done phenomenal work on our veterans and military members and their families because we know it's so important. And that is a subject that, and focus area that is strong bipartisan effort, and people care. And, you know, I often say that Washington is a place that we love our military members and, and their families and their spouses in particular, but last year was pretty phenomenal. And, you know, it gets the low press concept, but for those of us who care about our military members, we know what a big deal it was, and truly it was the most significant and impactful year in a very long time, and, and we've got some more good legislation. And I would invite you to join the Joint Committee on Military Veterans Affairs meeting tomorrow, virtually, if you want to, and watch online. We had our virtual meeting, our in-person meeting in the 28th in Lakewood at Pierce College in October, and our next meeting is tomorrow. We'll have some great presentations from the SSMCP, which I know that you are host of, as well as several other folks, and that's tomorrow, I think, from 10 to noon, but I could be wrong on the time. So Ms. Helder is nodding. So tomorrow from 10 to noon, you can tune in and learn more about the legislative updates for 2024. Thanks.
Well, great. Thank you, and thank you for your hard work on the military affairs issues for our community in this last session. We appreciate that. So before I leave this topic, I understand, Rep. Bransky, what you're telling us about the work on this sort of surgical strike, if you will, on this one policy topic, tweaking the law so we can add stolen vehicles to those crimes that are subject to vehicular police pursuits. What do you see as impediments to getting that done this year with your, your colleagues, and how can we help?
So I believe the conversation last legislative session regarding that adjustment to the police pursuit policy, it took a lot of air out of the room. There were some people in the legislature who were fully supportive of the change of policy from both political parties, and then there were some folks that really had a lot of heartburn and heartache because they had worked so diligently in 2021 on a policy that they thought was going to, you know, reduce interactions between law enforcement and the community, and, you know, in many respects, it actually did. But, you know, looking at some of the data and some of the concerns, you know, obviously we needed to adjust that particular policy to increase interactions to provide for, you know, more public safety. When it comes to stolen vehicles itself, obviously, you know, the, like I said, the, the quality of life between people losing their livelihood, if they get their vehicle stolen, to people losing their ability to get themselves to work, to medical appointments, things like that, you know, that's, that's a huge concern. So specific to this, I think that that's a fair policy change. I personally believe that law enforcement has the tools to do a pursuit safely. I think they have the subject matter expertise and the long-term field experience to determine whether or not a pursuit is warranted, or if the conditions for any given pursuit are more dangerous than others to where, hey, maybe we need to call this one off. Maybe even though this person did steal this person's vehicle, or here's a vehicle that's reported stolen, if you're, you know, doing 100 miles an hour through a school zone, for example, hey, that's a good time for those officers and those supervisors to make that particular decision at that time. But as far as the appetite for this particular change in the legislature, I'm doubtful because of the toll it took on some members of the legislature because it was pretty contentious, and it was something that people had a lot of concerns about for a variety of reasons. I can't speak for other legislators. It'll be difficult, I think, to bring this up, this up, this upcoming legislative session. We'll see. Like I said, there, there are some folks that have some concerns to include committee chairs where this policy would, would go through. It did go through the Transportation Committee last session, which I sit on, which is appropriate, I think, but it also goes through the other public safety committees where the bill, this particular policy would tend to originate, and I'm not, I'm not confident that those committee chairs have the appetite this legislative session to address something that took up so much time in a 105-day session. That's, you know, me being frank and honest. I know that's probably not what you all want to hear and the members of the community that want to hear, but I just think that's kind of the reality, this upcoming legislation. As far as support from council for us to ask our colleagues to be able to support something like this, I mean, you work collaboratively with other cities. This is not a Lakewood-centric problem. This is not a Lakewood-centric issue. This is an issue that affects other communities. And other communities, like you said, already have a policy in place to where, like I think City of Tacoma, if I'm correct, they have a policy before the law was implemented that prohibited vehicular pursuits of stolen vehicles. So let those communities, like what you said, make those calculated decisions based upon, you know, the expertise of their law enforcement personnel, the conditions of the place where they live. Obviously, you know, a rural area is very different than an urban area when it comes to risks to the community with a vehicular pursuit, and I'm, you know, more confident going forward, maybe not in this legislative session, but maybe in future legislative sessions, that the legislature might have more of an appetite to, to discuss this particular issue when it comes to stolen vehicles. In the meantime, you know, I am all for providing law enforcement more tools to do their jobs effectively, whether it's new technologies or improvised tactics or more resources. Certainly, we need more officers. I think that's a key part of the issue. More available space is the Law Enforcement Academy that the state runs. Really, the bottleneck there is that they're having issues with cadre. We need more. Really, the the bottleneck there is that they're having issues with cadre. We need more cadre to go out and instruct the future law enforcement officers in our communities to go out and do their best work. Great new classes, great new sets of instruction. We just need to get the people there, so that way the cities can hire more people. And once we get more law enforcement officers out in the community doing what they do best, I think that will also help with the stolen vehicle problem. But it's it's a huge problem, obviously, compounded by the fact that some vehicles are so darn easy to to steal, and that has just exponentially increased the problem that already existed. So so I appreciate that. And I think, like I said, the best way for the city and your to be helpful and and all you folks and members of the community is continue to to talk with us. You know, the data points are always helpful, because obviously, you know, if if this is something the community would like to see, and I know that there are some members of the community that would very much like to see this policy change, that's always helpful to us.
Great. We appreciate that. Yes, Representative.
Mr. Mayor, just to reiterate what I said at a community safety meeting that we had back in University Place. I mean, one of your requests was the the letter that you read, which you also read in University Place, was that to increase basic law enforcement academy classes. And I said there, what I'm going to say now is that's not going to happen because we've increased it by 29 classes. We've funded it, added all the additional classes we could possibly add. We've added regional training centers, which is very exciting. If you have an opportunity and you happen to be in the Tri-Cities, may I invite you to go to Pasco. I was there for the grand opening. Wasn't able to make it to the graduation because I had another meeting, but we'll be having those similar down south in Clark, up north in Skagit. Clark is becoming a little complicated, so I hope that the logjam opens. Spokane has one. And the exciting thing is that those facilities are full. I had an opportunity to tour the CJTC this summer, and it's very exciting, but they need a new facility. They are tapped. They they said to me recently, if you add more classes, awesome, and we can't do them. You have given us so many that we facilitate as a facility, we can't physically do it. And so that's why the regional training centers are so important, and we're excited to open those as soon as possible. And we're also excited to support the requests from the CJTC to expand their facilities, working through the Department of Enterprise Services to be able to do that. The other thing that's exciting, you know, there's a notion that no one wants to go in law enforcement, you know, their morale is low and all of that. And so what I would say to you, according to the CJTC, is all of those classes are full. So when I was at Pasco for that grand opening, there were there were names in the seats, and it was very exciting. And so people do want to. The classes are full. And what we are trying to do is address the 25%. So it's about 5 million approximately. If we were to be able to offer that as assistance to local jurisdictions, to be able to pay that balance. It used to be 100% back in 2011. That law changed. What is that, 12 years ago? Almost 13. And so trying to figure out if we're able to do that in this very short cycle budget, but that's a proposal going forward. And if we're not able to do that for a mid and large size, which you are considered a midsize, certainly, starting with small-size institutions in the 28th, which would include DuPont, Farcrest, and others is a good starting place. But working through that, trying to figure out how to do that will be an exciting opportunity.
That is incredible. So that'll be great. Appreciate that. Okay, the next subject is the geographic equity of discharge from state facilities, and I think there's no need for me to go through a laundry list of teeing this up. But as we discussed previously, you know, we understand Rep. Brnasky did great work in getting that April 2023 report completed by the Department of Commerce. And what we're working to address the inequity is prioritizing services in underserved regions. And this will have the added benefit of allowing individuals to live in their communities of origin where support networks exist. So I'm going to open this up for some conversation. I'm going to give you my advance apologies because I promised my youngest daughter that I would go to her year-end banquet where she probably will receive an award that starts at 7:00. So Deputy Mayor is going to take it over from here. But I just want to thank you for your time. Thank you very much for that. Yeah, thank you. So Deputy Mayor?
That lady's in my way right there. She keeps bumping me. So thank you, guys. So you want to get start, you want to start? The conversation on the demographic, on the geographic equity policy?
Yeah, I can start. So, yeah, we, the state appropriated money to the Department of Commerce to kind of get a clear picture on when someone is released into a less restrictive alternative from the state hospital systems. Where are they going? Are they going to the places that are the most appropriate? Are they going to the places that have the most resources? I mean, really, what we want to do is make sure that people get back to the communities where their care support networks are, where their families and loved ones and friends are, to allow them to get back to their community and heal versus going where those resources might not necessarily exist. And I I did look at the report briefly, and, you know, what you can see is, I think, the Department of Social and Health Services, who run the state hospitals, find that a lot of resources are here in Pierce County, and that makes a lot of sense, given the, you know, distance to to Western State Hospital, the distance to other mental health resources, medical resources here in Pierce County, local hospitals, et cetera. And on its face, I mean, to me, that makes a lot of sense for the department to make that decision when it comes to discharging people. And there's an extensive process, spoken several times to the folks at DSHS about this, what it takes, what do they have in place, what kind of support mechanisms mechanisms do they have, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And also keeping in mind that when folks are released from the state's custody at a one of the state hospitals, they have civil rights. They have the ability to make decisions for themselves. And so it's a combination of where are the most resources are that the state provides, that the state can find, in addition to where do you want to live? Where do you want to go? Where are your friends and family? Or do you want to get away from your friends and family, for example? So the concept here, I think, and I'm certainly, you know, will pass the mic to to council to hear your thoughts and opinions, but the the concept is to, again, provide people a pathway to the communities where they have those support resources and making sure that, you know, we do a better job as a state and as a community to to make sure those resources are in place where they don't currently exist. So, you know, the obviously, you know, not every community has these kinds of resources, especially if you're in a more rural part of the state. Again, why, you know, you'll see so many folks coming to King, Pierce, Snohomish, Thurston Counties, Spokane Counties. And then, you know, also keeping in mind that, you know, when somebody does, you know, leave the custody of the state through one of the state hospital systems, you know, we should, those communities, our community included, should welcome people back. You are now, you know, a a loved, cared-for member of the community, and let's make sure that we do our due diligence as a whole, not only just dealing with state agencies, but we, as community members, bring these folks back into the communities and make sure that we take care of them and and give them the dignity and care that they all deserve. So I I think I I hit on some of the main points, but certainly would love to hear the opinions of council.
Mr. Anderson.
The reason the resources are here disproportionately is because Lakewood has been dumping ground for decades. We had McNeil Island, Western State Hospital, when it was a more robust civil commitment facility than it is today, and the sexual offender unit, in in addition to having our own problems. And real estate drove a bunch of this. The real estate in Oak Brook, sort of all are are complaining about density of adult family homes, which you can't really do a lot about. But DSHS found it convenient to flip people out of Western State by negotiating with people in the adult family home business, where they'd pay them a higher rate because they have a more difficult person. Just to the extent that they were putting felony flips in adult family homes in Wood, in Oak Brook. And so that continues. If you, I haven't seen the report, but I think it's a safe bet that if you compare Pierce County with Snohomish County on a population basis, that they don't have nearly the releases that we do. So the solution is is a push-pull type. It used to be push-pull at marketing. Two ways. One is to require geographic equity that requires a dispersion. And DSHS has has been told this a number of times in a number of different situations. They always seem to find a way around it, or to mitigate the impact of what was intended by the legislation. That's one part. The other part is providing resources outside of Pierce County so that the people can be treated. I know there's tremendous pressure now to get people out into less restrictive environments. But there aren't a lot of places to go, and the place shouldn't be adult family homes in Oak Brook. Or places in Pierce County because we have traditionally had to deal with other people's problems. We should have our fair share, and because we're a more urbanized area, you do expect on a proportionate basis, maybe 125% of the state average, but not what we have. So we're asking your assistance in that. It's going to be a gradual process. They have to be coerced and and cajoled and mandated, and still, you know, DSHS has been administratively a problem for state government forever. But we're now going to see if, hey, we we welcome the, really, the forensic facility out here. It's a secure facility. It isn't going to have the problems of of releasing people into the community that shouldn't, that are going to a place where they shouldn't be. But but we're we're continuing to have additional problems. Landlords in Lakewood have additional problems because of the people that move in that shouldn't be in a a less restrictive environment that has, doesn't have the proper tools for them to succeed. And I have to apologize because I was supposed to be somewhere at 7 o'clock, too. And the mayor said this is probably going to go 45 minutes.
Mr. Boke.
Thank you, Mayor, or Deputy Mayor Moss. So first of all, thank you for the study. Because until you get a study, everyone's just guessing, right? And or it's anecdotal evidence. The study, I think, backed the anecdotal evidence in this case, but and I and I agree with you, Representative Brnasky, that it and and the ma- the the Councilmember Anderson touched on it. We're always going to be above the average because a lot of these smaller counties, you you can't start putting facilities in. It's not going to make any economics. It's already hard enough economics on a lot of these things. It's not going to make economic sense to put something in Waukaia County, right? There's going to be counties that just are not going to be able to support those kind of activities. It wouldn't make any sense. So we'll always be above average, right? I I I would think we would be in that range. But I I appreciate the one, the 178% gives us a number to work. I'm trying to understand, this just mentioned sex predators and adult family homes. But I'm thinking, and and I, and if you can help me understand this, we're not just talking about sex predators. We're actually talking about folks that are coming out of civil commits out of Western State. And what other kinds of residential facilities are we talking about? Are the ESFs, we already have one here, an enhanced service facility. And I know there's others, and the and and the state has really supported. Although it's just been a painfully slow process to watch some of these other facilities open around the state. So could could you help me out? Who who else, civil commits, sex predators, anybody else? And then what kinds of residential facilities are we looking at? Because I know the legislature's committed a lot of money towards building new facilities of all kinds for behavioral health. Can you help me out with that?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So, you know, Rep. Brnasky and I have, I was out at the Special Commitment Center this interim. I was also at Western State Hospital with my seatmate yesterday. Was it yesterday or the day before?
Day before.
Day before. Yeah, this week. Anyway, I am doing that. And I just want to say first, we don't want to demonize adult family homes. My favorite Uncle John, who gave me my nickname, who sent me political stuff from California. You know, we don't always agree on a lot of stuff, but I was always eager to get it. He raised me. I lived with him, and my father was a Vietnam. He lives in adult family home. And so there are great adult family homes who are taking care of our family members and doing an excellent job. And I just visited him in Oregon, in McMinnville, a couple of weeks ago, and spent the weekend with him sitting in the adult family home, who's doing a great job. So I just want to say first, let's not demonize adult family homes in Lakewood or in Oak Brook, who are doing significant work to serve our family members who are have developmental disabilities, physical disabilities, who can't otherwise have an option to be able to do that. So I just want to say that first. The second thing I want to say is that there are significant conversations about how do you move the civil commitment side of Western State Hospital, who really is moving in a forensic side of a 350-bed hospital. They'll have about 420 folks. I think, and so I looked to my seatmate, is what we heard a couple of days ago. And then the rest of folks will move into a civil commitment side. There there are going to be about 100 place beds in the University of Washington Teaching Faculty Hospital, which is very exciting to get that up and running. The DSHS just purchased a hospital at Cascadia up north to be able to take a bunch of beds and just opened. There is a hospital down south in Thurston County. There's another one opening in in Clark County and other areas. It is slow-going. There is no doubt about it. And there's no one who is moving them to move out in a faster pace than we can. And sitting on the capital budget, like, can we just, like, do the design, pre-design, you know, move, like, do both of them in the same year and then move folks out? I appreciate and very grateful to Lakewood for also adding a 16-bed facility and approving that through your process. And so there are options that are moving out, but it's slow. It's slow-going. And so where do folks go? Sometimes they go LRA's, you know, they have a constitutional right to move. The courts make those decisions. And we've heard that clear. It's not something that you all have pursued, options that haven't worked well in your favor. You've heard from the courts that have suggested another option. And so there are continuing efforts to be able to move folks out who need service, who need service with dignity, who need opportunity. And the good news is that the backlog, the counties, I'm sure you've heard of the lawsuit recently, and and that many counties, including Pierce County, have entered in. And so that lit a fire in DSHS that hasn't, should have had a fire before, candidly, in my opinion, but it certainly helped. And so that backlog has been decreased significantly. And I think there are about 60 or so folks who are still on the backlog on the civil side, and about 30 or so on the east side, 60 or so on the west side. And so trying to figure out how to do that, there will be legislation coming forward on LRA as it relates to how do you cite, how do you determine, how do you communicate and announce folks moving in? And so you'll start to see that through Public Safety Committee. Several bills are being introduced this upcoming session. Take a look at that. But it's a dance. And so I appreciate the opportunity to take a look at are there incentives for adult family homes? I think that was one of the things you guys talked about in an earlier meeting. Can you provide tax incentives to build out adult family homes in other parts of the state? I had a conversation with DSHS about that, and they were very excited and willing to work to see if there are ways to do that and willing to engage in conversation, both with the Assistant Secretary and Kevin Boeckhup and others. And so I think there are opportunities, and I think that's a good idea, but it's going to take some time. But moving quickly with the backlog has helped. And I think the legislation that I'm fairly confident that will get through this session will also help.
I I met with, I was with a group of people in my day job, actually.
Yeah, I, I met with, I was with a group of people in my day job, actually, and met with the folks at Western State a couple of years ago. And, you know, I really was impressed. They're trying, right? I mean, with relatively limited resources and they're trying to, they're, they're trying to run down the civil side and, and get folks out. And I think one of the nagging things that is, is out there for elected officials locally, and, and I didn't invent this, actually, somebody else mentioned it to me. They thought that these, the, the, these folks, it's the least confining environment, so they end up in an adult family home, but the adult family home isn't. So they stop taking their meds or whatever, and then they get kicked out. And that actually, a lot of these folks are ending up on the street. That's anecdotal. I, I, I don't have anything to support that kind of thing, but there is that thought process that may be one of the problems with the, the the number of homeless people mentally ill out on the street are that there, there are people who have cycled through the whole system, right? And they get into a very the least confining environment that they're, I guess legally do, right? But we start defining, essentially, we're just defining least confining environment as a street forum because they can't live in any, any kind of those low-barrier kind of civil situations, I guess. So I'll, I'll just throw that out there. I don't know that that's a fair assessment, but.
Yeah, Madam Mayor. We, we've asked for data on that from DSHS, you know, how many folks are being released. Released is not the right word, but how many are moving into the community and where are they moving? And certainly, the report bodes well. And the report's been out for a while, so I'm surprised that Councilwoman Anderson hadn't read it yet because I've read it. And it was presented to the council, but nevertheless, there certainly is information that is good in there that provides input, but also DSHS, we've asked for information as well because there is a notion that folks are being, quote, dumped in Lakewood and, quote, dumped in Oak Brook specifically. And so we've asked for information about how how that anecdotal information or that perception matches up with reality. And we'll be happy to share that with you because I think that would inform certainly of where we want to go, but we're partners with you on that concern.
Mr. Brnasky, the other.
Yeah, I, I appreciate Mr. Bokey bringing that up, but, and while our legislative priority is worded as geographic equity, that there, that there is another element of equity that, that needs to get considered in this problem that I think DSHS ignores. And that has to do with when people are ready to leave a state hospital or it's not like they had an appendicitis and they've had the operation and now they're well. That they, they come at all different points to do that and you know, I frequently get the, the idea that the policymakers at these hospitals are encouraging their staff to say, well, if, if we can't move this person along a path to being better here, then let's send them somewhere else. And that, you know, the enhanced treatment facility that was established here in Lakewood, it's, it was done with, with actually, like, I don't know where they got the money, but it's a private, it's not a state-run facility to do that. I've had a chance to tour it, and I go there and I see that they're, 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 they're professional and they're really working to help them. In the adult family home realm of the ones that I've visited in Lakewood, they fall into maybe three groups. One are the ones that are actually pretty traditional adult family homes, like adult family homes were decades ago created to do, and they're filled with elderly folks who have a need for to have some camaraderie and some family, maybe some assistance with some things, but that they're not they're, they're not necessarily dealing with mental issues, being able to go and do that. And they're, and they're housed with like individuals so that they actually like the environment where they are and to be honest, their families like the environment of where their family member is. Then, then you have a, another group that it's on the other end of the spectrum that are, they really give you the impression of they're, they're, they're just there to make money. The facilities are, are, are minimal, the rooms are small, sometimes they don't have beds, there, there's mattresses on the floor. They, they have minimal staffing with limited qualifications to be able to go and do that. And they're, if, if a person really needs some medical aid, well, the fire department's only a phone call away. You know, and, and, and then, then there is a, a, a small group in the middle that have really are looking at being the next level down of care, but are looking at, they, they don't take residents in of saying this is not hospice, you're not here till you die. You know, you're, you're going to go through and we're, we're, we're really trying to make you better, not just warehouse you. But I think that when DSHS decides that a person is no longer needed or they don't think that the, that they can continue to do things with, with the hospital, they don't really make good decisions about where they send the person. They're willing to send the person anywhere that will take them. And if they have to offer an inflated amount of money to, 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 to someone to take this person and warehouse them, they're fine with that because now they've got the bed back at the hospital available to them. And so I think that there is an element, as you look at this problem, there is an element of where communities are concerned about how too many adult family homes affect the, the character of a neighborhood. But equally, if not more so important, is are we doing right by the people that are migrating out of care at a state hospital? Are, are they really being migrated to a place of where there is a adequate facility with trained, the, the right kind of staff? To help them continue on that journey to whatever level of wellness they're going to, going to be made, made, made to do that. And I see that concern when I talk with frontline staff at Western State. I don't hear it when I talk with administrators and policy people. They're more concerned with how many beds are there being able to go and do that? And they are also legitimately concerned about how safe is, is the hospital, which, 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 which they should be. But the solution to safety is to not to move a dangerous person somewhere else. It's to do your job to get them to a place of where they're not so dangerous, I, I think. So it's a complicated craft that you have to deal with, looking to do that. But I would echo Councilmember Anderson's comment about a reprise of past efforts. We can go back to, I remember 15, 20, 20 years ago, when Senator Carroll was in the 28th District, and he worked on a thing that required that people would go to there. And the problem is, is that, right, it, it's, it's the compromises that went into the legislation left loopholes for DSHS so that the while, while some people, what benefited some people, it also was crafted so that DSHS can deal with their numbers problem without dealing with the, the problems of the people who have been entrusted to their care. Okay, and that they're now just looking to turn out.
Any other comments? Well, I just wanted to say that we know that there's more need for investment in, in behavioral health. We know that because with the opioid predictions and stuff going on, it's just going to increase. So if you can, more you support is better than that. So I want to thank you guys for coming out and listening to us tonight, and I know you would do what you can to the best of your ability is to help us to get through the issues that we're facing. So unless there's other comments.
Madam Mayor, because you all are asking lots of us, I just got a couple of questions. Would appreciate just to follow up, to learn what $14.06 and how you're spending those. And that's certainly an interest of ours as we figure out what local jurisdictions have spent and on what particular projects as well as the counties. So it would be helpful to know that. Also, AWC is asking for a 3% tax increase. I know you're contemplating a tax increase in TIF that you've been doing hearings on, that is tax increase. And so would appreciate knowing what council members feel on the, on the cap that AWC is coming strong with. I've heard that Lakewood is supportive of that, but would appreciate knowing that on the record of, of where you all on that because that certainly informs our decisions of, of where we are, of how to, you know, do that dance. I have concerns about it, but my understanding is that Lakewood is supportive of AWC's initiative as it relates to that. So on both, on all three matters, if I could get follow-up, that'd be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I, I was happy to hear that there's more facilities in the making, so we, we are willing to share with anybody that's open, okay? If there's nothing else, Mr. Caulfield? Then we are joined.